Good evening, everybody. We will call to order the town council meeting for Wednesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right?
Seventy?
Act number seventy, but happy to have them here. It's always a privilege and an honor to see the little guys. Oh, boy.
Cute.
This is Max cuteness right here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Talk a little bit about Act Seventy.
We just might have something to share.
Oh, nice.
Luke, AOL Luke, would you like to begin the updates?
You can stand right where you were. They have microphones all over. They can hear you wherever.
Right ahead.
I'm under religious naught and am crossing over to troop seventy on Monday.
Nice.
This is Weebelows Connor, and he has the distinction of being a denner, which is, which you can tell by his golden shoulder cords there. So he's in a position of authority.
Love it, love it.
Go ahead, Connor.
I was fifth in the council in Poplin.
Excellent.
Weebelows Nathaniel.
I did a five-mile hike with the Boy Scouts.
And we have Wolf Cub Connor. Don't have anything to say?
That's okay.
Didn't you win a medal at the ring that it got him?
Oh.
Congratulations.
Very nice.
And newest addition to the pack, we have Frank Wu here, who is another Wolf Cub. Anything you want to tell us? You don't have to.
I did coloring at the new.
King?
King.
Caroling.
Nice.
Our only lion in attendance. Lions are kindergartners. This is Quentin. Quentin, you have anything for us? You just transferred from where? We've got to make it, we've got to speed it up a bit. They've got a lot of work to do tonight. Pact, Pact three forty-nine in Queens, so.
Very nice. Nice to them.
Well, guys, thank you for coming and honoring us tonight with your presence. We really appreciate it. We're super proud of you as a community. And all of us up here who are volunteers, we can tell you, there's nothing stronger than the heart of a volunteer. So keep up the great work, guys, okay?
Thank you.
Monster salute and the camera salute. Right, and exit stage left.
Thank you. Actually, that is stage left.
Okay.
This is stage right, right?
Yes.
We'll now take the roll call.
Rita Bettino.
Here.
Um, Byward.
Here.
Janet Fons.
Here.
Luke Kaufman.
Here.
Mike Morrow.
Here.
Maria Norton.
Here.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Hillary Norman.
Here.
Christina here. Eric Hunan.
Here.
Penny Young.
Yeah.
Jennifer Zonis.
Here.
All present. We have a quorum.
Excellent, okay. So I just before, as a point of chairman's privilege, before we commence the regular agenda, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of a truly amazing member of our community, a great contributor to our community, part of the heart and rhythm of our community for, oh, boy, almost a hundred years. Leo Carl Jr. passed away, like I said earlier this week, he was ninety-four. As we all know, Steve Carl, previous chairman, he upsets his father. But I wanted to take this opportunity to, for all of us, to take a moment of silence to, in honor of his memory. He served this community for decades. You know, when I read the wonderful obituary piece, memorial piece in the New Canaanite, which I commend to everybody's attention, what an accomplished and distinguished person, a human, a father, a brother, and all the hats that he wore. But as I said earlier, you know, the heart of a volunteer is truly strong. And Mr. Carl was a real fixture in this community for so long, and his loss is a great loss for our town, but obviously more important for his family. So I'd like to take a moment of silence, and if anyone would like to add something, we certainly would appreciate it. No pressure to do so, but we all mourn his loss, and we send our deepest sympathy and condolences to the family. There will be a, the wake will be tomorrow from four to eight at, you know, Tucker.
Point.
Point, right. And there's a ten AM mass on Friday at St. Aloysius. So I just want to take a moment of silence. And if anyone wants to say anything, you can do that, so. Thank you all. Anyone want to comment? If not, we'll move on to the agenda. Okay, great. Let's move along. Okay, item agenda number two.
Mics, we're still, we're still in the process. It's just these boxes. This is picking up the mics that you see in front of you.
Right.
Good to know. Not to worry.
Item number two on the agenda is the minutes. So just so the public is aware, we have a just a couple of corrections to make to the previous minutes that were adopted at our last meeting. So we'd like to have a motion to provide an amended, amended minutes for the meeting.
Uh, December thirteenth.
It's the December thirteenth, meeting minutes that have already been approved, need to be amended.
The November fifteenth.
November.
November fifteen.
Are the organizational meeting minutes. Those are the ones that need to be approved.
Right, okay. So we need to approve amended minutes to correct the certain factual inaccuracies that were in there and some other matters. So the council's been provided the proposed amended minutes for their review, so we can have a hopefully very brief discussion and approval of the amended minutes. So would someone like to make that motion? We can open up for discussion.
Let me just be clear, which date again?
You're just approving, you have not yet approved the November fifteenth organizational. Those are not amended. So those are the organizational meeting minutes that need to be approved. And then the December thirteenth, there's two versions of the December thirteenth. So it's the second version, which is on your tablets, need to be, that's all I'm aware of that need to be approved tonight. All right.
Okay, so then we can start within the organizational minutes that have not been approved.
Exactly.
So if we could have a motion for the approval of the organizational minutes. Can we make that motion?
Motion to approve the organizational minutes from November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second. Maria Norton, seconds. We'll open that up for discussion. Are there any, any comments to the draft minutes?
Is that on here? Because I see the twelfth thirteen.
It is on there.
But I don't see the.
It's called TC organizational minutes. It's a word document right under.
Maybe.
Right under TC minutes.
I can show you. Goodbye to you, sugar. Sorry. See, I don't see it. Is that not it?
It should be under this meeting.
See, there's those minutes.
I checked every tablet tonight. The second row.
I just was trying to see it, sorry. TC organization. Okay, sorry. Now I got it. Thank you.
Oh. Oh, right.
December. But nobody had.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, yeah. Enough discussion here.
Just approve of this minutes.
That's all.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any, any discussion on the organizational minutes? No? Okay, we'll call for a vote to approve the organizational minutes. All in favor? It's unanimous, it passes? Okay, the next order of business with the minutes is to have a vote for the approval of the minutes for the meeting of December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I know those have been on your tablets for a few days, so if we could have a motion.
Only one set on our minutes.
Right.
Tap us.
There should only be one set. There was an original set that Christina filed, and then there were some amendments. That second version is what you're approving tonight.
There were amendments that were made between then and now. Wait.
Not amendments, edits.
Edits.
Right.
So we're, we're considering the one that's on the tablet. You can sort of ignore the fact that there was one that predated that.
Right, thank you.
That's all, right. So can we?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second. Anybody?
Is, have some discuss.
Get a second and then have.
Yeah, we do have a second. Okay, we have the second discussion.
I've got a comment in the first selectmen's comments section. There's a sentence that says the mill rate is expected to decrease, which will neutralize the valuation increase. Um, that's not actually factual. Neutralize means totally offset. I suggest wording change to the mill rate is expected to decrease, which will offset a potential tax impact of higher valuations. Or the, which will offset the potential tax impact of higher valuations.
Say again, the mill rate.
Mill rate is, this is the whole sentence. The mill rate is expected to decrease, which will offset the potential tax impact of higher valuations.
I'm confused. Are we, are we looking at November fifteenth or?
Yeah. Number thirteen. We just approved November. Now we're doing December.
So did, did you, I'm sorry, that was just the latter part of the sentence, right?
Yeah.
Okay, because I almost, to me, it's also, it says it does not represent an increase in taxation. I, I might say that it does not necessarily.
Yeah. Um, that would be.
Represent. I would also add that, that word.
That's fine. Any other edits, comments? Uh. So Tucker, I'm understanding that the date of the pension fund, sort of deadline for that is February one.
Correct.
And is there such a thing as a pension advisory group?
No, it's retirement planning advisory.
That suggests we correct that. And then at the bottom on the nature center, uh, I double-checked this with Bill. It's, it's the roof that's falling apart, it's collapsed, not the, not the rest of the structure. So I, I'd suggest that we we say instead of what's there, that we say updated capital projects, including Audubon House, whose roof has collapsed and needs rebuilding, period. Otherwise, the building should be demolished and removed from the site. That's fine.
The only changes that I saw were that Colm Dobbin, Bob Hamel, and Tiger Man all attended. And in the members present, just in the appetizing of it, Jen should be last, Penny Young, and Jenny, and Jeff.
Could you repeat that?
On the members present, if you're appetizing, it would just be Penny Young and then Jen, Jen Zonis, who was the. Last, that's just at the Zoom, those three. Fall to order, and you can say that we did the pledge, had the pledge of allegiance. Oh. Again, first selectmen's comments, first paragraph, meeting with the chairman of the Board of Finance will be taking place next week to discuss Board of Finance guidance rather than just guidance. Um, and the first selectman is doing a deep dive, not board select. Is doing a deep dive, as well as a thanks.
Where's that? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So that first, that first paragraph, first selectmen's comments.
Yes.
About two-thirds of the way down, start, yeah, the meeting with the Board of Finance will take place next week to discuss guidance. It was just to discuss Board of Finance guidance. And then it says the town is in the middle of the apartment budget cycles, and the first select, not the boys select. The first select is doing a deep dive into the projected numbers.
I think I like the word deep dive. I mean, it's just really an analysis of the budgets. It's a done every year procedure.
I think she said deep dive, didn't she?
Yes, she did.
So.
Um, on the nature center, down the very last sentence, to rebuild, to create a two program. No, say a two's preschool program. Yeah. Which will help address demands, not necessarily unmet demand, but that's. Then financial update, third sentence, I'm not sure I understood, is just a sentence saying not having residents accustomed to this process.
So maybe, maybe what that should be is delays in parking permit revenues were due to the introduction renewals by emails, comma, and not having the residents accustomed to the process.
Makes sense.
Financials, there's a sentence at the top of page four, the rotation of audit firms and bidding process was recommended for consideration. I think they were suggesting that, that we do go out for bidding. Well, I don't know, I'm not sure who was the rotation of audit firms, more just that we go out to bid, looking at different audit firms, but. And then the only other change was just to say what Open Gov is, Open Gov, which is a new online permitting system.
Great. Any further edits, comments? No? Okay, are we prepared to vote? All right, if we can get a motion to approve the minutes from the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Have Kim and Luke who've already made the motion. So now they should just, you should just meant to say to amend the amended minutes.
Need to amend the motion.
And make a motion to adopt the amended minutes from December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second. Okay, this is further discussion? All in favor? No, thank you, all right. Number three on the agenda, public comments. Are there any public comments here or on Zoom, remote? None on Zoom, none in here? Okay. Moving on to first selectmen's comments. Let's take a deep dive.
That's what we do in Phoenix. And we did a little different process or went back to an old process that wasn't, you know, being followed. So we're being a little more diligent. Anyway, I think most important things probably to note are that we started the Board of Selectmen's initial review of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Um, we should finish that process by January thirtieth. Weather has created a little bit of a we're supposed to get a little further than we wanted to, but with the schools closing and a two-hour delay today, it kind of shifted everything, so we have a little less time to get through everything. But, um, you know, I think we'll, we'll be in good shape. And we're rearranging a few things and get through the process and be able to move it on to the Board of Finance after the thirtieth, so. Um, I think it's probably most important for you all to know that we are going to be having a public hearing on January twenty-four to discuss the moratorium application. There was a petition circulated and signed. I think it's important, I mentioned that at last night's Board of Finance meeting, and wanted to do it here just for whoever in the public might be watching. This public hearing is only to discuss the moratorium application. There will be no discussion of the three pending eight thirty G projects and the litigation surrounding them. So I just, I wouldn't want members of the public to come and be disappointed because we will not be having any discussion around those, those particular items because of litigation. Um.
What time will that be?
Sorry. Seven o'clock, seven o'clock, and it's in this room.
Okay, who's running the meeting? That's the board of select.
It'll be myself, the two attorneys from Birch and Moses, and then Sarah Carey, who filed the moratorium application.
Is she the director?
She is our planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning director.
She's our town plan.
Thank you.
So she has a presentation to give, and, you know, it should be, it's a, it's a time to listen to the public. It's, you know, not a it's a very, um, there's not a lot of specificity around what's required in that here. So let's just, anyway, we will do that and hopefully be able to proceed with the moratorium. It's a little bit of a delay, but horrible one. So that's just.
Is this, I'm sorry, is this to discuss, have we not submitted the application?
We have.
Clear.
We have, so the way, I've got a, you know, I wish there was here, but I think this specifics is it's ready to submit.
Okay.
Um, but there is a waiting period in between when she completed it. And so if someone files a petition for a hearing, you have to delay doing it. So, so that's why.
Great, thank you.
So not a huge delay, but it is a delay.
Sure.
Uh, and then, um, we, you should have seen in your package, we seated the Affordable Housing Committee today. So very exciting. Um, we have some great individuals that have committed to serving on that, on that committee. So we're excited about that. And then you will have in front of you some candidates to, to review that we we brought forward this morning for the Audit Committee and the Board of Finance Alternates. And we also have an RFP going out for legal services, some pension advisory and, uh, you know, pension management things. I think I might have mentioned last time that then that being guard was or Mercer was no longer again doing pension management. So that's level.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the hard work. Thank you. Okay, number five on the agenda, the New Canaan Museum and Historical Society presentation. Laura Zierus. Evening.
Thank you for having me. I'm Nancy Geary. I'm the executive director of the New Canaan Museum and Historical Society. And I'm going to share my school. This is always like the most nervous making part. Let's see the words.
You have it on their tablets.
Okay. Um, I'm going to start with a little bit of the history of the New Canaan Museum. For those of you that don't know, it was founded in eighteen eighty-nine, making us the oldest historical society in Fairfield County. Sixty-five men and women met, and then after a number of years of meeting in, in people's homes, they moved into the library. One of the library donors had funded a world, a world historical society for about forty years. When thirty-three Owen Oak, which is a Hampford Solomon House, which is one of our historic house museums, came up for sale, the board raised the money and bought it and moved the whole business over to Owen Oak Ridge. Um, in nineteen sixteen, so the Hampford Solomon House was a farm, and it had all of what is now St. Michael's Parkin lot, was farmland. Um, the museum traded the parking lot to the church in exchange for the eighteen twenty-five original town hall, which is now our principal offices. Um, in nineteen sixty-six, the John Rogers Studio that had been on St. Mark's property, well, it was John Rogers's property, then it became St. Mark's. That moved over. That is, for those that don't know, the very first landmark building in New Canaan. In nineteen sixty-six, the Department of Interior designated that for its, how it represents the culture of America. And the next one was thirty years later, it was the Glass House. The Rock School is a very sweet story. The one-room schoolhouse from Laurel Road was moved on to the campus in nineteen seventy-six. All the public schools, children raised money to move it, and they had a celebration with wonderful pictures of it. And it was dedicated to the children of New Canaan. And then in two thousand, many who probably know this, there, when the town bought Irwin Park, friends gave us the pavilion, raised money to rescue that building. Uh, this is for this year, our, our revenue is mostly members of the maintenance gifts. Those are mostly individual gifts, individuals and private foundations and donor advised funds, but basically individuals. Um, our program revenue, our program revenue, most of our programs are free, so they have no revenue, but we do have several fundraisers in some programs that you buy tickets for. Um, grants this year, if you looked from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, our grants would have been a much higher proportion because the state of Connecticut was very good to museums after COVID. They didn't want them to fold, and so we were able to get a fair amount of state funding that has since dried up. Um, the town of New Canaan for the last three years has generously given us twenty-five thousand dollars. And the miscellaneous other, it's hard, sometimes it's a bequest, sometimes it's somebody that, um, gives us money. For example, we had a Myron Goldfinger Foundation exhibit of Myron Goldfinger's architecture, and that foundation gave us a generous gift to help to pay the cost of that exhibit. So the other is a kind of catch-all. Our revenues, um, mostly salaries and contractors. We employ a number of contract, independent contractors for things like our website, our bookkeeping. Um, the salaries are obviously our staff. We also, the staff play an interesting role because we kind of are jack-of-all-trades. We run our programs, we do our development. We don't have individuals that are hired just to do those things. So we all do everything. Fundraising and marketing is really very little. It's, it's mostly the cost of our website. Um, maintenance on our buildings, as you all know, old buildings have a lot of maintenance, and so that's been a very substantial part of our ongoing um, work. I mean, just last year, three heaters and two air conditioners failed, so it's, you know, eighty thousand dollars of HVAC work. So that's, and it's very, very hard to predict because when I started in twenty seventeen, I was told that everything had exceeded its life expectancy, sitting with this thing, one day at a time, hoping nothing happened. And then utilities and programs. Programs mostly pay for themselves, though. Um, in terms of what we've done for what we consider sort of our, what we've done for a wider community, we've spent money on the Goris Pavilion. Obviously, our use agreement with the town, the town does the exterior, we do the interior, so the heating and air conditioning and that kind of stuff was paid for by us, as well as some internal things, like we just paid for the new hot water heater last year. We put about half a million dollars into the Historic House Museums, and then we built the Walworth Terrace, which turned out to be especially important in COVID when everybody wanted to meet in the door, so everybody used it.
Question, just really quickly, the maintenance that the town does, is that part of the twenty-five thousand or in addition to twenty-five thousand?
The, the work that the town does on the Goris Pavilion is totally separate. The town owns the Goris Pavilion. We just use it as a museum under a use agreement.
Okay.
The twenty-five thousand is just a straight twenty-five thousand dollar check that comes to the museum.
Thank you.
Um, this is a little summary of what we have. For those of you, and I see some familiar faces, so for those of you who are museum users, you know what we've got. We have an enormous collection of clothing and textiles. We recently had both a wedding dress show and an evening dress show that were very popular. Um, we also have some military uniforms and very rare quilts. The textiles are just huge. Uh, we have a lot of land and property records. For anybody that's a Realtor, they use our resources very frequently. We have some genealogical records and New Canaan family history records. We're, we're, our rural cemetery collection is growing because it was sweet to see those guys appear earlier, but the Eagle Scouts have done a number of projects documenting the rural cemeteries, and then they give those to us. So more and more people are coming in to do research on, on some of the smaller cemeteries. And we have an enormous photography collection. For those of you that don't know Bob Gregson, he was the Connecticut's Director of Culture and Tourism, and he gave us a loan, a hard drive of about ten thousand of his photographs of mid-century modern buildings in New Canaan. Uh, and he's, we're allowed to use those for any of our programming or educational purposes. Uh and he's, we're allowed to use those for any of our programming or educational purposes. And then we have a lot of paintings and drawings and prints. We have work by Arthur Zeig. We have work by the Silvermine Art Colony artists. We have work by artists that we don't even know who they are. Uh they didn't sign their paintings, but it's, that's a very big collection as well. Uh we put on about thirty lectures and presentations a year. We put on several um major exhibitions. We do all sorts of tours. Many of you probably know the Modern House Day Tour, which is every other year. October for Design was something that we started really through TDAC. Um it was, there was a lot of discussion around Canaan being known for its mid-century modern architecture. And um I guess this TDAC group said, you know, is there something that the Historical Society can do to expand that and, and draw in visitors? And October for Design was born. Um it's done a number of things, but the, but the best part about it is that it really draws from all of the cultural institutions in New Canaan. At this point now, almost everybody participates, certainly the Glass House and Carriage Barn, Grace Farms and um so that's been, that's been really nice. And I get, I get inquiries all year long about when those dates are and what's happening. And I think that people are paying, you know, planning visits to New Canaan for that. And also Tucker brought our culture guide that was part of the initiative that was from October for Design. Um Odicast, for those of you that haven't been over to Lakeview Cemetery to see this, was a program that we worked on for about six months. Um if you look at who's buried in Lakeview Cemetery, it's a who's who of New Canaan, not only people that have impacted this town and shaped this town, but people that have really shaped the world. And so we, using the Odicast app, which numerous organizations in New Canaan have used, we did bios of twenty-two grave sites. So there's a little, there's an audio about the person's life. There's pictures, as many as we could find. And you can, and there's a like pin spots on the map. So you can scan the QR code that's in the door of the office at Lakeview, and you can walk around and hear about those people. Um it's a project that will never be completed because we'll never catch up with all ten thousand people and more people go in. But um it's, it's been, for the people that came to the opening and have since used it, I think it's really an interesting way to navigate Lakeview. And uh of course, there's our Ice Cream Social, which for the last two years, I'm very proud to say has been free to all, and the attendance has grown enormously. Um Hillary, I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I wasn't thinking when I put this. Anyway, these are our, these are our museum users. Uh we have lots of school tours. Sadly, we don't have New Canaan children coming. The um mostly the New Canaan schools don't come. Um but we have lots of area kids, including Westport came, and it was interesting because I said to the teachers, you know, why are you coming here from Westport? And she said, we really love your curriculum that you do for your, you know, for your colonial history. So um we have those. We have lots of organizations that use the buildings and grounds. Um we have a number of volunteers. We started keeping track of our visitors uh about three years ago in connection with some of the state funding. They wanted to know both numbers, they wanted to know zip code data, and they wanted to know demographics. Um and so we have started to collect that, which is why we have a better sense of our numbers now.
And why isn't NCHS coming? Why aren't our schools coming?
They apparently stopped coming. I mean, this was sort of the history is before my time, so I don't know that I can answer that completely, but they stopped coming when they, when Saks would do a Colonial Day on campus. Um I think the busing is very expensive and some of the laws have changed about how you you can, even if you were close enough, like Saint Aloysius used to come. And they, now they would have had to have had a bus. And so they stopped coming because it was just too expensive where they could walk a couple of blocks. They, I mean, now they don't have a school, but this is when they have a school. So my understanding was Colonial Day replaced the school tours for New Canaan.
I was gonna say, our kid, my kids all went to the Historical Society, you know, and must have just changed around. They also did the Colonial Day at Saks, so maybe it just.
Yeah, we were, we were negotiating to try and get the first grade was interested this year. And then the days that they picked turned out to be testing days or something, and they had to reschedule and um some of the buildings are heated, so it became December and it got too late. We're hoping they can come back.
We took some out-of-town guests on a tour last summer. It was fabulous. It was really great. And we heard the same thing, that New Canaan students don't come. Apparently, they used to come many years ago when people would organize, you know, get six or seven adults, parents to drive, and everybody would go on this field trip and go back. That apparently raises legal liability issues, and so now you have to have a bus to bring the students. And as you say, cost prohibitive to hire a bus to bring kids from East School to the Historical Society and then back. However, it's an incredible tour and it's, it's a wonderful asset. And I wish, I wish New Canaan students would almost be required to go take the tour. It's just, it's really good.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting to me because we had a Hebrew school come from New York City.
Yeah.
And you know, their bus, well, five was like two hours, these four kids, they got stuck in traffic, but they were happy once they got there. Um okay, so this is also our, for those of you that haven't heard about this, this is our Campus Reimagined campaign. We started working on this about four years ago. We, we launched the Capitol Campaign portion of it last June. Um there's four parts to it. There's going to be um if you know our, our main office building, the library is, and, and the offices adjacent to the library are going to become one big space that will be a permanent exhibition on the history of New Canaan. Uh it's arranged, it's not arranged chronologically, it's ranged topically. So there's people, there's art and architecture, there's growth of the downtown, there's business. Um and there's going to be interactive media stations which allow us, because a thousand square feet is not that big, given this town's history. But the, the, the media components will allow us to store a lot of data. Kids can sort by, or anybody can sort by leaders or who they want to know about. Um we're also going to have one for the Silvermine Artists. And there's um, they're working on and they don't want me to use the word animated because it's using photographs and live footage, but it is a, a short film on the evolution of downtown that's slightly animated and slight, we, things like we found a nineteen thirteen film that um they're using clips of that show people going in and out of St. Louis Target Store, showing these women in long white dresses waiting for your trains to come in. I don't know, it really is a great, it's great footage, and they're weaving that into the, what will be on a loop, so people can see how the downtown has changed. Um the Special Collections Museum is pictured here. These drawings are by Mark Markavitz, who's on our, our Board of Governors. Um the existing Tool Museum is being torn down. And this is what's replacing it. And what's going in this building is um we were, I guess we were gifted a, a eighteen sixty Demeress carriage. Demeress was a major carriage manufacturer in New York. And it had been given to Stephen Foyth when he retired from being president of the New Haven Railroad. Um it was being stored at the Stanford Dump. And a lot of the things have been, like the beautiful lanterns have been stolen, so it was really a mess. Um we've spent a lot of money in eighteen months restoring it up in Orange. There's a um there's a carriage, well, it's a car restoration place, but they also do carriages. So that's going to be right in the window. The middle of the building um that doesn't have a lot of windows is going to be an operational print shop. We have the Ho Acorn Press, which the advertiser gave to us. It didn't print the advertiser, it printed the Stanford Advocate and then was used by the Hersham family to print special things and invitations and stuff like that. It is a beautiful um press. It's the only acorn press in Connecticut, and that will, it is operational. And so we will have the ability to run printing programs and workshops in, in this building. And then the last part is um exhibit space that will be dedicated to the Silvermine Artists. The little shed off the back is the studio of Addison Millar, who was one of the founders of Silvermine Art Colony. Um and he, well, it's a long story. He, he died and his daughter was raised by the Borglums. And the Borglam family has given us this studio. It's currently located on Mill Road. It's going to be disassembled and then the it's kind of complicated. It was made from the first cut of the tree from the mills. So what happened is the artist had no money. So the, the, the mills would give them the first cuts because they were going to be throwing them away. So it's very thin pieces of bark. Um and they wrapped the studio in this bark. Probably when it gets disassembled, some of that bark will decay. But um I can't tell you which mill it is because I don't remember. But our prior board president contacted a local mill, and they have agreed that if anything gets destroyed, they will give us first cuts so we can rebuild it in the same way. And that will be put on at the end. Um and one of the things when we went to the Historic District Commission is they were quite excited that this architecture would be preserved because it was quite common um around the terminal, the terminal last transfer. For people that didn't have a lot of money, this is how they built stuff. And there isn't virtually anything like it surviving. So it will give you, it will give you a sense of what this architecture was. I'm, I'm hopeful that we can rescue more of it than not, but you know, we won't know until we take it apart. Um the third thing of, that's part of this campaign is the Rogers Studio, which many of you know. And most of that work has been completed. We're, we're still working on the interior space, but there was a leak in the skylight, so we had to get going on that before we started the Capitol Campaign. And then the last part is um our clothing and textile collection is literally busting at the seams. Some of the things are not being stored properly because, for example, some of the heavy dresses should be lying flat. They shouldn't be on hanger. We really need more space. Uh we have an attic. It's kind of creepy now, but it is an attic space that can be renovated. It needs climate control. It needs some other stuff, but our uh we want to renovate that, move the men's, military and children's clothes up there. And there's plenty of room for that because those are our smaller collections, and then we would have some space on the third floor of the building for the basically women's dresses. Um the whole campaign is two million dollars. We've raised just under one for the expected completion for all four things is December of twenty twenty-four, so we're moving very quickly. Um and the permanent exhibition is being dedicated on May thirty-first, so we know that that will be done by May thirty-first. Um we did go to the selectmen. I, I talked to the Board of Selectmen to ask for the town of New Canaan to increase its funding. And last night spoke to the Board of Finance as well about that. So thank you. I, I'm happy to take questions, but I appreciate your time.
What, what's the current funding now?
The, most of the funding comes from memberships and private donations and major gifts. The, the campaign pledges are against, at this point, all individuals. We have um sixty-seven thousand in a grant from Connecticut that, that is dedicated only to the work for the Rogers Studio. It can't be used for any of the other buildings. And um the town did give fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funding through the Community Foundation that, that is restricted to moving the Millar Studio onto the back of this building. So we have those two buckets that are, you know, bigger than, well, they're not bigger because we have individual donors that have given substantially more than those sums, but those two public funds and everything else is private.
But are you asking, did you ask the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance for an increase in the twenty-five thousand dollars that you get annually?
Yes.
As a budget line item, or did you ask for?
We have not asked for anything for the Capitol Campaign.
Okay.
We have asked, we have asked that the um the money that goes towards our annual operating fee increased. The, the principal reason that we need additional funding, in all honesty, is that as we transition from being in a historical society to a museum, we need to be open. And at this point, we have two in staff, so every night and every weekend that we want to be open is me. And we just need more, more educators, more docents, more tour guides, that kind of thing. And we would like to be open on every Saturday and every, at least Sunday afternoon. Um so, and to have all the buildings open so people can just wander through. I mean, that's what a museum should be. It shouldn't be that you have to make an appointment. It should be that you can see the open hours and show up.
So how much are you asking for?
I asked the Board of Selectmen to increase to twenty percent of our operating, which would be about eighty thousand dollars.
So are you asking it to be part of operating, or are you asking for a grant?
I'm asking it to be part of operating. The, the twenty-five thousand has gone into our operating. It has been an unrestricted use. Um and that's really, at this point, what we need.
So that would be every year you would want?
Well, I'm assuming you make your decisions every year separately, but, but I'm asking for this upcoming year.
I see. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any way of presenting?
I just needed to say thank you. I mean, this is, you, you know, this town is a marketing campaign away from being known as like Colonial Williamsburg. Yes. A, a, a little bit more budget and a little more marketing. I mean, I mean, God, what an amazing place to come and visit.
It's remarkable. I, I don't know if anybody, I have a personal thing about clothing, but I think the first time I came years ago, I said, I want to see this, this clothing collection that I've heard about, and it would, it just blows you away. I mean, they're so, you've done incredible exhibits. The exhibits have been, not just the clothing ones. Um the Black Residents of New Canaan exhibit was phenomenal. Everything has been phenomenal.
And actually, that's now the Community Baptist Church.
Oh, fantastic.
Their, um, and their, their interim minister, Reverend Burgess, is being installed on Sunday, so they took that exhibit and put it up.
Great. That was a really impactful exhibit. And again, I just popped in to see it, which was nice that I could come in, but um it, it, there's so, there's so much there and, and the campus is just incredible. So yeah, I, I love the historical, the museum and Historical Society.
Just a, as a comment, I, I agree with all your comments, and I think actually the architectural uh New Canaan known as, being known as architectural, sorry, capital in this area, along with the historical um significance, I think is a really nice combination. The one thing I would say, um I, I, I'm not as concerned about asking for an increase. I, I would say I would love to be able to look for ways um to be able to benefit our immediate community a little bit more. So the fact that the kids aren't coming, like, is there a solution we can come up with so that this wonderful resource can be, you know, more, you know, used by?
Yeah. Well, I shouldn't say the kids aren't coming. They're coming with their parents.
Right, I get it.
Primarily with their grandparents.
Right.
So they're, they're coming, but in an organized fashion.
Right.
We've reached out. Um Elizabeth DeMuth is on our board and she's very involved in the PA, and I think she, that she's talking to people and we've you know, every time someone says they want to come, you know, we find docents and we're ready to take them. I think it's, it's, it's just I'm open to, let me just say.
And I'm not saying it's just you.
I also, I also noticed on your presentation that it still said in terms of the overall visitors, eighty-five percent of the overall visitors are New Canaan residents. Was that for, like, who attends the program? So at some level?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I would say the fifteen percent are primarily for the Modern House Day Tour. That really attracts people. It attracts people from all over the world. Um we had a big Canadian contingent. Um we have had people from Australia. We've had people, we had people from South America this, this last fall. So that's, that's mostly, and then there's the occasional person from New York or something that monitors. They don't know where they're going.
I'm only, I'm only, I'm not saying this is, I'm saying, I'm suggesting that this is such a great resource that we should um collectively, right? There should be more opportunity for maybe connection that's um i- it would be a great opportunity, I think, for us to use it more.
Yeah, I think so too. And, and, and it's, it's possible that when we have the Special Collection Museum and an Operational Print Shop, that at least the art students would want to come.
Phenomenal, yeah. Looking for those opportunities, I think, would be really valuable.
If I, if I may add, I think that this is something that could be requested of the Board of Education to include in their budget.
That's interesting. I mean, aren't there buses that are just sitting in the, in the parking lot all day long? So I don't really get why they can't just hop on the bus, but I'm not the Board of Ed Rep.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, we don't have, we don't have a problem solved here. I think we identified an opportunity that we should investigate. I think this is such a great resource and why not? You know, use it. So fantastic. Thank you.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, I have to get on the ground here and unplug my last night. We were down there with flashlights.
She's a pro now. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to then the item number six. Uh discussion on a town council committee process. Um okay, so this, it'll be quite brief, but uh going into our budget season, as I've made uh clear a few times, I think that our process, the TC process is you know, a little flabby, and uh any process is always subject to recalibration and fine tuning and tightening. Um so what I'd like, excuse me, to do with our committees, and it will have um application outside the budget process, but I just want to focus on the budget process right now. Um a few points of, I think, how our committees should be um gearing up and how they should conduct themselves moving forward over the next whatever it is, eight weeks. In conjunction with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and kind of flowing along together, minimizing the burden on the department heads in terms of having to give the same presentation multiple times and answer the same questions multiple times. You know, the Board of Selectmen is at the vanguard of this process and they have, you know, fantastic is at the vanguard of this process and they have, you know, fantastic people that are on the board and they will certainly do the deep dive. That's required. Um, so I have great confidence in all those who will be vetting that process out. They, they do a heck of a job. And all the years I've been on town council, they've always done a fantastic job. So with that said, I think with our committees, um, and all the coordinate committees, consider the following moving forward. You know, at the beginning now, you should obtain budget materials as soon as available. Tucker, I know we had the discussion about what's available, going to be available. Would you mind just briefly telling, uh, just reminding everybody?
Yeah, it actually has been refined a little bit more since the last time we spoke, but um, we have a communications committee meets every Monday and we talk about all the different um, things that we need to put out there as well as how things live on our website. And one of the things that we discussed this morning at board of selectmen, and then I had discussed it with Mike was, um, we're going to have right now, there is a budget folder set up online when it pertains to the budget that anybody could go for. It's with the agendas. And all of that documentation. But I think Mike, what we decided today is we're going to talk with IT next week about actually across the bottom of the website there, or in the middle, there are icons and you might have one that's just a budget button. And you'll click on that and it'll all be there for all the different boards, which the schedules, the meetings, the, you know, the dates, the, the documentation for the budget.
Yeah, sure.
We talked about different things in terms of the tablets, access to the tablets all year long, but as far as the budget goes, that's what we're going to recommend next week. So we just need to talk to IT. So they don't have to click, 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 click. Then it's just click.
Yeah.
And it'll all be there and then they can choose whatever it is they want.
Well, that's fantastic. That's great news. Um, right. A clearinghouse for everything budget related, schedules, materials.
Question. Is there any way to get us on open gov for the whole town budget? Is that? Allow residents to look at the bu, the entire budget. So use open gov for the budget process?
Well, the open gov is an application. It's for online applications. Um, so I don't know how we're, I don't know.
Carrie Anne has it and they have it for residents and they can go in and move things around on the budget and just come up, you know, not permanently, but just show different kind of ways of changing the budget and it just gives residents an understanding.
Yeah, I'm not as familiar with that aspect of it, but it's working really, really well.
Oh, good.
For, for the departments that use it.
Yeah, it might be a function that we just don't know about, like.
Yeah, we, we do have, you know, different levels.
Or that, put in the budget.
We can find a way to integrate the board of Ed stuff onto our, like the town calendar never has the board of Ed meetings. I know they put it on their own website.
There's a link on our website to all the board of education.
But it's not in the, like in the major, the main calendar, like for tomorrow, there's an evening. So there's no agenda, you know, it just forces you to, you look here and then you're like, oh, gotta go to the different website.
Yeah, they would just have to populate it on hours or send us, if they send it to us, it would really come from them. If they send it to us to go on the calendar, um, and we would put it on our calendar, but they need to, we don't know, we don't know. They would have to send it to us and then we could put it on a calendar. Uh, but there is a link to the board of education site on the homepage.
I hear what you're saying, Maria. I love that, like, right-hand column with all the meetings that are forthcoming. And it would be, it would be so helpful to see if where BOE falls in there, right?
I agree.
And logical. I think a lot of residents would assume that it would be that every, everything would be there, but I find that vertical.
And I understand that's additional administration work for somebody. I wonder if there's any way to make that automated somehow.
Maybe their webmaster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Someone puts it on their website. So if it just gets in their cycle to also.
Just add an email address. I'll, I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tucker.
Yes.
All right. So with that said, we have access to the material for the budget. Uh, so let's, um, let's get after it and get ahold of that ASAP and start reviewing it. So we all understand contextually what's going on and what's happening for our new members.
January 30th, when, what's left when they finish their budget, correct?
Whenever, well, I'm saying whenever it's posted up. So we'll be advised of when it's posted. Yes, absolutely. And to our newest members, of course, you know, this is new to you all. So any questions you have, feel free to funnel up to any of the more senior members who've been on. We're happy to help kind of figure, you know, answer any questions about the process and you know, don't be afraid. I mean, my first year, I, you know, I honestly just didn't know what was going on. So, but I had some good people, you know, um, who were senior to me who really helped out. So please reach out and ask. It's, um, everyone's extremely helpful. Uh, okay. So with the board of selectmen meetings and their budget meetings that are, that are, um, uh, uh, public meetings, I encourage you all to either attend virtually or in person or watch the replay. Like I said, I am in the car a lot, so I geek out and I, you know, I listen to stuff while I'm driving, you know, multiple, multiple hours per day. Uh, and it's, it's, but this is the job we, we signed up for. So like I said, the board of selectmen will scrub that budget and it's excellent listening to them when they are going through with the department heads and walking through every step of the way. And that's giving us, the absorption rate is starting. So we can understand what are the, what's the board of selectmen focused on, you know, what, they understand fixed costs, but what, what is, what are the bigger issues that should be focused on? So you're building out your mental construct for each department, understanding where their numbers are coming from, where they were, what they want and what they're projected to do. And that happens to be on both operating side and the capital side. So it's, it's really key to listen to what the board of selectmen, uh, their process and follow along with it. Um, and to that point, that's when you should start developing areas of interest that you believe you need further information for. Whether it's, if it's the police department and want to understanding more over time. I know there was the article in the McCain and I today. And again, as we all understand, you know, our operating budget, most of it is fixed cost. We have labor contracts that are the lion's share of our departmental operational budgets. And there's a very small portion of each department budget that you can truly make some changes to. So we have to be mindful of that. So understanding those pieces of the budget, uh, on the operational side, uh, it'll help, you know, just start developing areas where you think you need further information. Uh, and also whether you need any additional documents that you believe are relevant to getting a, gaining a better understanding of whatever issue it is that you, uh, that you have. As the board of selectmen process winds down, you should start considering when to schedule your committee meetings. Uh, I, I urge that all of our committee meetings be concluded by no later than the first week of March. Now with that said, uh, the board of finance also now then they get the budget and they're scrubbing it and they're having the department heads come in during the month of February. The department heads have, you know, they have only maximum amount of time. I mean, you know, they're W2 employees. They're very dedicated. They'll put the time in, but they have families. So we all have to be mindful of how uh, responsive they are to the board of selectmen and to the board of finance and being available. So again, with the board of finance meetings, we should be tuning in, watching the replay. You'll have now heard it a second time. Okay. And you should have your questions that have been developed and you're refining areas of what you believe you need further information on. Um, so while, so again, in February and that first week in March, when you're scheduling your time with your, your meetings with the department heads, be mindful of what their timing is, be as maximum flexible as possible, because we really, I'm trying to reduce the burden on them and also all of us. With the.
We not have already met with the department heads in the combined board of finance town councils meetings?
Uh, if we have, then if you don't need to have a department head at a committee meeting, then that's fine. Whatever access we're getting to the department head, I just want to utilize to the maximum possible to minimize that burden. So if we're going to have, like last year I had, I had the, the PD chiefs came and talked with us. That was an issue with the dog. So I can't believe that's been a year already, but it was great. Like they came in and, and I'm going to address this in a minute. But yeah, I mean, I had access to the department heads, but I wanted them in again for very limited purposes. So that's all. It's a great point. Yeah.
Purpose of the combined board of finance town council meetings was so that we wouldn't have to do duplicate of, you know, presentations so that there's one presentation to both bodies.
Right. So that, what kind of gets.
Is it bodies or subcommittees?
No, it's our committees is what, what I'm saying. So, so this really dovetails into the point I was getting to, was saying when you have your committee meetings in, in February and early March, if you need a department heads there, then ask them to come in and, but be mindful. And if you do have them come in, don't have them coming to give you the presentation again. Just come in for your top line. If you have questions, any real target where you feel your committee needs additional time to just vet out any particular issues. I'm trying to winnow the process down. So by the time we're getting into late February, early March, we're not having another round, a fourth round of presentations. And then a fifth round, uh, you know, in late March for when we've, we're finally getting it.
Well, then one would be, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out timing. I, I love this, by the way. I think this is so, so smart. Um, but I think met timing. So if we have the committee head say meetings and actually for the board of Ed, I think there's, there's so much already planned. We don't need to do that separately, but for like, say the utilities, the infrastructure. Do we gather, when do we gather questions from the other members to then bring to the department heads? Like where is that in the?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm.
We meet with them first and then get, gather questions?
Well, no. So that's, that's kind of the, what I'm quote nerdy beauty of being, of, of attending the board of selectmen hearings or watching them, watching the board of finance and you should be developing those questions throughout that, really starting immediately.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's the whole point is where do you think you have questions on these particular issues? Start compiling your own list. And on a, on a particular committee, if it's a finance committee, you know, you, you start funneling your questions up to Eric. The chair is a various coordinate chair should be compiling a list from their, from their members on that, on the committee.
All along.
All along. Yeah. So we get to a point that if you're not hearing answers to the questions that you've been compiling as the chairs uh, during February, then we should, you should be, um, sending up those questions to the department heads. And I've spoken to the department heads and they would gladly answer questions by email throughout the month of, of February and early March. If it's, if it's designed to limit the time that they have to come in and have a face-to-face somehow with us. So like I've spoke with Dr. Lutz, spoken with Dr. Lutzy, I've spoken with Tiger, I've spoken with the PD. They said, if you have questions throughout to us, you know, throughout the, the February process, please just send them along to us and we will absolutely answer them. That helps us manage their time better. So get those little questions together. If you have them, get them to your chairs. Those should be transmitted up, up the chain to the department head so they can answer them. And again, be flexible and mindful of their time. If they don't respond within a day, give them time, whatever time that they need, because they're, they're trying to accommodate the board of finance.
And there's a really helpful schedule that, uh, is posted on our tablets of all the board of selectmen meetings and board of finance meetings. So that can guide you.
And I will be updating that because as Deanna said, we already lost, we didn't get to DPW today.
Okay.
So we're going to add that, um, move things around, um, for the 25th, we're going to add DPW there. So my point is that I will always make sure that we update the schedule, but follow along on a daily basis because we are like what happened today and yesterday, we're literally inserting as we go.
This is so helpful though for an organizational tool. Did the board of finance appoint their committees yet?
Well, they haven't because they're waiting for you all to, to finalize their alternate members. And once that happens tonight, they got their list.
Got it.
Um, they will then do that and they know you're waiting for that.
Right.
The department, the questions are compiled by the, um, subcommittees. And the list of questions go from the chairman to the department heads, not onesies.
Yeah, that exactly. We don't want them just getting pounded, you know, with random.
That's what you're doing for the department.
Correct. Yes.
One list that goes to the department.
Yes. Right. And then at each chair and vice chair is aware of the questions that are being posed and keeps track of it. And then that helps kind of, you know, um, steer the timing that the, uh, that the department heads will have in terms of, you know, responding to us rather than a, a piecemeal kind of thing. And, and that raises another point, Hillary, about um, our committee meetings, all remember our committee meetings must have a, a, a board of finance liaison if we're discussing budgets. So that's additional layer of coordination with the board of finance liaisons. And they're like us too. They're volunteers. So we have to be mindful of their schedule. So it's a lot to coordinate. We get it done. We always get it done, but we're just trying to really tighten this process up at this time.
And just, and just to reiterate, um, Tucker, you're going to provide us with that once they've assigned.
Once they, once they pick up where there's committee groups. Um, it'll look like this, which has got town council on this side, board of finance on the other side. Um, and then you know who to call.
Are the detailed like budget presentations, are they online? Where can we find the actual budgets? Are they, because like for the board of Ed, like we don't, the budget book is not.
Yeah, they're having their another meeting tonight. So they're, or.
Ah, okay, it is.
But it's not approved yet.
Okay, that's why it's not available.
Well, it's available. I mean, on their website, it's definitely available. And they, and all the budgets that we did today and Boris Lechman, it's all, again, they're, it's on the website right now in the multiple clicks, but we're going to make it in the one click. But any. It's hard to follow if you don't have the. For sure. And, and it's, and if it's not hard copy, sometimes it's, it's hard to follow as well. So. You all will have been given the option when it comes time for the town council to get hard copy.
Okay.
Or a soft copy. So you'll just let us.
Uh, question. Penny mentioned the joint board of finance town council meetings. I don't see any of that on the schedule.
They're not.
That's what you make.
We set them up.
It's as chair of your committee, you, you.
Yeah. And the board of finance liaisons haven't been assigned yet because their board of finances isn't, isn't totally populated yet. So once that happens and Todd figures out who his subcommittees are, we can reach out as.
So once you get this list, Eric, you will look and see whichever ones that you're a chair of. You'll look at the corresponding folks and you'll say, you know, what are the, are you guys available these dates and times? All have to be posted, noticed, open to the public. Uh, Zoom links, just go to Pam. She'll give you a Zoom link if you want to do it through Zoom.
Where do they get posted? Just to you guys.
Just like you would post. And you know what I'll also do? So I will send you all a template of an agenda.
Excellent.
Add a template and, and where it gets filed. I mean, that was in your original packet that you got from Claudia, the, when you took your oath of office. But I'll send you a template of agenda and minutes so that you can just.
That's great.
So what I like to say is that some of the departments have scheduled meetings that happen monthly. So you can't, you shouldn't be doubling it up and scheduling another meeting. Just look at when that meeting takes place. And then go to that meeting and you will find everything that you need to know.
So you're saying that the schedule that Tucker put together, that we have on our tablets, so when that list like fire, that's Thursday, February 15th, that's a, that's a board of finance meeting, right?
Yeah.
And so that's not what you're referring to.
No, the, some departments have scheduled meetings like helping human services. So if you attend the meeting, you will get all the information without having to notice it and gather all the parties involved.
Presumptively.
That's not a department. Yeah, that is a commission meeting. Human services.
Whatever it is, it's a starting point to get familiarized with what's going on and what the pro, uh, budget process is for that department.
Unless the departments themselves are meeting prior to the commission so that they know what they are presenting to the commission for further discussion.
Well, I think that a starting point is to call the department head and find out what the scheduled meetings are, rather than try and guess and put everybody through creating a meeting without having that information.
Aren't the meetings already scheduled?
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
Hey, can I just say something about Health and Human Services? And I think Penny, you, you and I were co-chair, would they have their commission meetings, but they're not focused necessarily on the budget. So what we did for the past two years is set up the separate meeting. And I know Mike is saying now get really focused on not having them do the presentation. But so they have monthly meetings and then we set up a meeting with the town council, co-chairs, the board of finance rep, and then the other members of the committee. So that's what we've done in the past.
Yes, but in the past, you've also attended the commission meetings.
Yes.
So.
Isn't that part in parts? Although your, your job on a committee is to go to the regular meetings and then report to town council what's going on. Generally, not necessarily specific to budget.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Okay. Um, and we're bumping up close to the 15 minutes, but I want to get to read it, uh, matrix in a quick second. Um, okay. So on along the lines of the questions that I, we had that discussion a moment ago. So we're going to set a date, uh, prior to our first budget meeting for town council that any remaining questions from the coordinate committees that, uh, are outstanding to be sent up, excuse me, to the vice chair to be compiled and then distributed to the full TC. Uh, and then, uh, we will have those questions to the extent they can be transmitted to the department heads prior to uh, our first meeting. We will do that to see if we can get answers, but we will certainly let them, give them a heads up on it. But those are the types of questions that are at the very end and are truly just, haven't been answered yet. But we should take under, undertake every effort to get all questions answered prior to our first budget meeting. But we will compile any outstanding unanswered questions. We will transmit them to the department heads prior to the, the budgets, their budget, uh, presentations, because we know obviously we don't want to ambush anybody. We want to give them the opportunity. This isn't like the. The, the budgets, their budget uh, presentations, because we know obviously we don't wanna ambush anybody. We wanna give them the opportunity. This isn't like the court when we're trying to. Get you, you know, on a cross examination. Um. Right. Well, I did that in the beginning. I didn't know any better. So, um, okay. I really did. So, okay, there'll be more to come on how we'll handle our actual budget meetings. I, I, I don't wanna get into that right now because we're bumping up on our time a lot then. There was one other point which I can't remember. Oh, so um, cannot remember. So we'll just move on. The other thing I mentioned earlier, you know, there's operational but, the operating budget, and then there's the capital budget. Uh, we had this discussion last year. Rita had a, I thought was a really great idea to help us assess. Um, our capital budget. Uh, expenditures, um, you know, there's been, at least in my tenure on town council, uh, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, um. Having a five-year plan. Also, what's the use of this particular capital item uh, over the course of time? Rich Townsend was very big on, let's identify a use before we start just saying we need to do this and replace it at some point in time. So I thought Rita has developed a nice uh, matrix for us to use as an analytic tool. As we move forward. So I'm just gonna give Rita a couple of minutes here just to give a chat about it and we can further talk about it.
Uh, quick, many of you have already seen this or a version of this, um, a couple of you have not, but um. It struck me as we were talking about capital projects that um, it, it, it ended up sometimes being very subjective. Oh, well, five of my friends thought this was a good idea, so I'm gonna endorse it or, or wow, some people have showed up to. To um, support this project, so we should, you know, maybe push it through. And not that there's anything wrong with that, but I thought there might be a better, more methodical way to kind of approach comparing different projects, especially, you know. This is, we have to be really careful with our, with our town peoples, townspeople's money. Um, so this matrix is, I try to make it as simple as possible and I took the input, the feedback from a lot of um, folks here when we discussed it. But if you look at the example at the top of the page, um. I just uh, came up with hypothetical projects, so project A through G. And you would put in the, the division, the amount that's um, of, of the capital projects. And then one, two, three, four, five, six, seven criteria. Um, so one being utility, so uh, how useful is this to the population? Um, is there a risk or a safety issue? Is there a preventative benefit? Is there, what's the added value? Are there thorough plans that were put forth? Um, is there an increase to, to the budget that we wouldn't ordinarily kind of think about? And are there funding offsets? Is there a public-private partnership? And that would be a plus. So. You would basically, um, the process would be that each of us, say there were ten projects, let's take the ten maybe highest. Um, costing projects, we wouldn't be looking at projects that are like ten thousand or anything, but like the highest um, level projects. And individually, we would kind of be rating on our own. Uh, on a scale from, you know, zero to five. Um, how each of the projects would score up. And then it would be a way to discuss, like we'd come together and we'd say, well, you know, I think the added value is really high because of these reasons. And Mike, you might say, well, I think the utility, if you consider, you know, the school's use and whatever. So we'd have a discussion based on. Really hard criteria instead of it being too subjective. Now, at the end of the day, nothing is complete science. And there's a little subjectivity to it, but it helps sort of identify where like the ones and the fives are. So the ones could be, um, their watch outs because say, um, there's a huge budget impact. That would be a one and it's a red flag. Um, on the other end of the, of the scale, um, there could be really big funding offsets that are, that we wanna um, consider. That would be a five, that would be a green. So it would be a way to, for you to look at your, all the different projects and what are the reds and what are the greens? And then it would help us lead the discussion over, you know, what would be a better uh, project to fund. That's pretty much.
Yeah, excellent. I think it's, will serve us very well. So um, anyone has any questions on it, but I'd like to really start implementing this, I think.
I do have a question. Um, I'd, I'd be interested in the uh, selectmen's reaction to this. Because all of the department heads have five-year plans that are part of their departmental goals and objectives. Which has been established from an administration standpoint. Um, and those get prioritized as the Board of Selectmen go through the budget. Um, as to which ones, you know, actually pop up in the year. Of the five-year cycle that they have been identified, uh, because they're attendant, um. Occurrences within, say, say the, the five-year plan for the roads. You know, maybe we've had a bad year where the roads are in worse shape than had been planned. Uh, or they're in better shape, so then part of that funding gets moved into year two or three, four or five, whatever. So there's some differentiation and prioritization that occurs. From an administrative standpoint in the relationship of the departments. So this puts another uh, level of um. Evaluation. So we would take the recommendations from the selectmen from an administrative standpoint. And say what we are judging those decisions that are being put forth through us for the budget.
Yeah, I think that would be included, I think, in, in this criteria. And I, I think all I'm saying is that before when we were discussing things. We weren't, we were being more subjective about it. So although the, you could be presenting five different projects that of course we all think are important. Um, we were then not putting as much. Like method behind our discussion. And it was, again, it was like, oh, well, I hear this might be, five of my friends think it's a great idea. So. So it's more about putting more. You know, solid criteria behind our conversations than simply sub- subjectiveness.
And this would not be a ranking and like whatever's on the bottom of the list gets cut.
No.
Like we're not, the goal is not necessarily to cut anything. It's just to, I guess, evaluate them. And I, I mean. I, I suppose, yeah, I think you could go into utility or added value, but if something takes, you know, several years to implement like roads, if you have a multi-year plan. Um, I think that can be incorporated here.
Well, and that would be preventative benefit. I feel like any of those, I feel like, and you know, and I'd be happy to share this with you, obviously, like. I'd be happy to, you know, take you through it, like that you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, but not right now.
Yeah, at some point. Um, but yeah, so this isn't, there's not, it's not a science. It's like, okay, if we've scored it, then it makes the cut. And if it's, you know, a low score, it doesn't make the cut. That's not really what this is about. It's about evaluating it. And if we only, if we did only have a certain amount of money, let's just say, and we did have to make hard decisions, this is gonna help us best.
Could we add an other column? Because there might be a criteria that I haven't thought of yet, or somebody equally brilliant has thought of it. But it might be important to someone and not to another person and you can say other, and then you can fill it, because everybody's gonna have.
Hundred percent.
And it's a working document individually. So you can say like, well, I actually like this because.
Yeah.
Whatever.
I know, I think, I think the, the topics are probably gonna cover ninety-nine percent. However, I'm happy with adding another one, whatever. Like honestly, if you look at this list and think there should be something different, this is not written in stone. This can evolve and it can be refined. So happy to share it, um, get your point of view.
Just for, because I, I mean, I, I think to Penny's point, there is a five-year plan. So this is for when you're trying to cut out projects the last. There is a five-year plan and, and projects move through that. Um, and, and so you do want to be mindful that. Certain projects have been on there for five years.
Of course.
With the intent that they would be funded eventually.
Of course.
And so. I, I guess what I'm asking you is, is your criteria that you've developed really for those that you've said, okay, they've made it through the five years. But now because of the, you know, whatever criteria you developed, we wanna cut them out because it didn't. You know, because we need to cut the budget. I mean, is that sort of, it's really just a budget cutting mechanism?
My, my, my take on this anyway is that we, we get all kinds of capital projects from the selectmen. Right, cause goes through the Board of Finance. So when we get the list, that particular year. We evaluate the projects that are on the list right before us.
Okay, so the stuff that's.
Creating projects, we're not bringing new ones in. We are evaluating what has been presented to us.
So but they've, they've made it five years and then at, at this year, you've said. Now, we don't wanna, I, I'm just asking.
To be, to be honest, I, I don't think any of those types of projects would ever be considered to be cut. I think what this is more about honestly. Is a lot of the other, you know, um.
Like one-off projects, like the.
The playhouse or well.
Aren't in the five-year capital.
Yeah, yeah, this is.
Fire truck, we have to replace that.
Usually the fire trucks are in the.
Yeah, so I'm saying, and that has to be, and they have to put deposits in way ahead of time, but there's other things that pop up that were, wait a second. And that's in alignment with Rich Townsend kept saying over the course when he was on town council, and I always agree with him saying. You know, we have all these different projects coming with us that are not necessarily some major infrastructure thing that has to get replaced. You know, wha- 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 what are we in for here over the long term? And these criteria help us understand, you know, can help us evaluate. Is this, you know, should we be giving a couple of hundred grand for the board walk around? You know, so things of that nature. But like I said, when you're replacing a fire truck or the, the PD fleet or things of that nature, I mean, that has to be. You know, or some of Tiger's, you know, trucks, they have to be, you know, moved, they have to be circulated out of the system.
I'll give you another example of something just to consider. So, you know, I, I think someone had donated um, the, the fitness thing in the, in the. Yeah, let's just say someone was saying, hey, it's, it's a public-private partnership. We're gonna be funding part of it. And it's, it's put before us. You know, one of the things people may not have thought about back then is maintenance, ongoing costs, right? There's a, there's something in here that makes you consider that too. So you're. You're just more thoroughly thinking through the projects that come.
It's also not necess- not necessarily, correct me if I'm wrong, an exhaustive list of every capital project. It's like the major ones, the one-offs, the wave any playgrounds, the Irwin Trail. It's like not, I don't, I wouldn't envision it or I wouldn't use it for like. The road improvement, I mean, have to do the road improvements, right? So.
Exactly.
Um, but people can put what they want. I just think as we.
Or roofs.
Yeah, well, those are optional apparently. But no, uh, I think those sort of major ones that we, that we end up discussing anyway, that are sort of the big.
No, I, I always think it's good to have targeted ways to discuss things.
Yeah, I think that's all this is.
And it's just, you know. And I think the other thing is to be able to provide for maybe those others, you know, outside organizations or people from the nature center or, or park. When they come and present to think about, how are they, how are they evaluating this proposal that I'm, I'm putting forth? What, what pieces of information should I include that would help them make a decision?
I think that's a key point, Rita. I think people coming forth, that we have like this framework and the structure, that people understand it's not just like. Hey, this is what we're looking to do. This is the number and this is how we're doing it.
Exactly.
Like if you have that, like that framework as people come in, that's a little bit more of a standardized, like, okay, this is, this is what you're looking to do. This is the reasons why. Um, I, I, I think that, that's gonna be a very impactful part of this is not on a, what can we call, because that seems negative, right? Is that have a framework on, on a go forward is, this is how we'd like to present something and this is the evaluation that, that we're looking at this. Uh, I, I think that'd be key to success, right? So in a positive manner that um, it's not about cutting. I think it's about like. Getting everyone on the same page, being like, hey, and, and I, and I think it's key to have that, like that one outlier. And I don't wanna review every, the, the roofs and everything else on, on tonight. But I think that everything that was said here this evening is, is definitely um, would be very impactful on the go forward is. And, and I think there's, there's a different level of presentations that people do and obviously everything's unique. But if there's like some base format and structure, I think that, that'd be very useful for everyone, uh, uh, uh. Including people that are presenting like, hey, this is what you wanna see and this is the format I'm gonna put it to.
Just to be clear, Rita, just, I know this is probably clear to everybody.
That's okay.
We're not asking the department heads to complete.
No, we're not, no.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Um, last point, Tucker, and maybe we could chat offline, but it may be helpful for our newest members. If we could maybe put up on the website, last year's presentations, right? Like if you could look at a previous, you know, PD presentation, which, you know, just run through their deck and understand it. Because they basically, I've noticed over time, they're kind of just tweaked a little bit, kind of the same thing, just with different numbers. And it may be helpful for contextual purposes for some of the new members to say, okay, this is what the PD budget looked like. This was his presentation. This was the chief's presentation or, you know, the board of ads a bigger one, but I mean, obviously it's, it's first rate. But every one of the department heads comes in with a deck, they put it up and they go through it. So maybe helpful just to thumb through it. Just so you have a, an idea now what you're gonna be seeing coming.
Are they there?
They're here.
That's available.
If you go under twenty twenty-three meetings, you can go to the prior year. Just go, if you go to like twenty twenty-three meetings, March fourteenth. You can see the presentations there. So that's a great, that's a good point. That's a great place to start.
So um.
So they should.
Are they available? They, could they, they could be put up on that.
There's a difference. That has the presentation, but if you go to the video of the meeting, then you can actually hear and see everything that.
I cancel all my, um, you know, Netflix and Hulu, so I can. Stream every night.
But anyway, I just thought that would help. All right, uh, so we're done with that agenda item. Thank you, everybody. Fantastic comments, great discussion. Uh, okay, let's move it along to number seven, appointments. We'll have the approval of the following appointments. Uh, the Board of Finance to confirm the appointments of Jan Schaefer and Nicholas uh, Metracas as alternate members for two-year terms. Ending December first, twenty twenty-five. So uh, and if you'd like to, wanna.
Mary's here.
Oh, perfect, okay. Uh, oh, right. Well, I was gonna do Board of Finance first, but okay, well, we'll, we'll continue along. And for the Audit Committee to confirm the appointment of Mary Cody to the Audit Committee for a three-year term ending December first, twenty twenty-six.
Take the next step.
Yeah, no, I know, someone reminded me, so. Uh, so why don't we have a, Jan, would you like to come up for a minute? Just to say hello and uh. Be helpful to everyone in, maybe you sit down for a quick second in TV land.
For anybody watching at home.
Yeah, so just so, you know, maybe just a quick, quick bio and we'll vote, just so the, the whole public knows who you are.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity. So I have, I hate to say it, but about forty years in finance. I started in corporate finance and over the years found my way into wealth management and private banking. And then I left the corporate world for a couple of years and worked with two former colleagues in a small little investment boutique. And then left and went to the nonprofit world as a fundraiser for about four years. And now I'm winding it back into wealth management. Uh, working, I have a partner and we work with families who unfortunately affected by addiction. And um, so I have not done a whole lot in town. I've been on the RTC for a long time in my corporate world. I just didn't have, I've been on charitable boards, but I didn't have the time and now I find myself with more time on my hands. And I feel that my background and expertise would lead to the finance board. So I am very, um, very anxious and willing and looking forward to serving if, if I'm approved.
Right, well, it's a fantastic background. We appreciate you stepping up to serve. Um, okay, any questions, anybody? Well, actually, we should make a motion first. So let's make the motion. Oh, um, and is Nicholas online?
Don't mistake our silence for skepticism.
Yeah.
I think we're quiet because we're happy.
Yeah, for sure. Um, okay, so uh. Uh, well, let's first vote for, uh, let's get a motion to vote for the appointment of Jan Schaefer to the Board of Finance as an alternate member. Can someone make the motion?
Sorry.
Knowing you personally, it'd be.
Luke made the motion. We have a second. Second.
Look, we all want a second.
Okay, discussion. No discussion, uh, okay, let's have the vote. Everybody all in favor? It's unanimous. Welcome. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and I'll, I'll put this out to the, to the, uh, my colleagues. Um, so Nicholas isn't here. Um, you wanna have the vote to, to appoint? Uh, do you want to hold it over? Or what is the, what are your general thoughts on that?
Can anybody speak for him?
I can.
What was the plan?
I mean, his CV is, is in the, so.
Yeah, Nick is.
I mean, I had a chance to read it and.
Yeah, Todd Laviuris met with him, was very enthusiastic. Um, well, Deanna obviously met with him. He just was unable to clear tonight.
I know Nick personally, I, I think several of us do. Um, he's extremely professional and he's got a great finance background. I think he would be a wonderful addition to the Board of Finance. He's very responsible and knows what he's feeling. This is the perfect fit for him.
Fine, okay, we'll make the motion and we can have a discussion. So who, so who would like to make the motion? Okay, so Hillary's making the motion to confirm the appointment of Nicholas Metracas as an alternate member for two-year term ending December first, twenty twenty-five. Do we have a second? No, Rita seconds. Do we have any discussion? Having no discussion, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Welcome. All right, uh, next up, uh, if we could have a, um, well. Um, Mary, would you mind coming up maybe, uh, just like Jan, have a quick.
Didn't sign up for that.
I didn't sign up for that.
I think it's important for the public to know, so if you wouldn't mind just giving us a quick.
Yeah.
Quick bio would be great, thanks.
Um, lived in town for a long time, um, my husband grew up here, graduated from St. A, he's no less, at high school. Um, my kids graduated from high school, um, they're gone now. I spent twelve years on Board of Finance, so I know all about the budget. I, during that time, I was the secretary for a long time, um, I was the liaison for the Board of Ed. Um, did two of their teacher contracts. Um, so basically, as far as the town operations, I feel like I know them pretty well. Could probably answer a lot of your questions, I don't think it's changed that much. Um, so this is just a, a different way to, um. I'll call it get back in, I've had a lot of people ask if I would do something, um, and this at least uses the, um, my background. Um, I'm CPA, I do taxes, uh, mostly now, but I started out, bought a team, believe it or not. Um, school districts, towns, so it's kind of grown over the years, so. That's pretty much where I'm at.
Excellent, well, thank you for that, it's great background, uh, okay.
I will say, as someone who has approached Mary numerous times, it just hasn't been the right time in her life for continued service in the town. She brings an enormous background, um, in in many, many, many different facets of our operations, and she will be an extraordinary resource to us. And happy to propose you.
Are you making a motion?
I will make a motion.
All right. So, so Penny has made the motion to confirm, well, we'll open it for discussion, okay? Uh, to make the motion to confirm the appointment of Mary Cody to the Audit Committee for a three-year term ending December first, twenty twenty-six, do we have a second? Eric, okay, discussion.
Thank you for stepping up.
Anybody have any discussion here? Okay, so having no discussion or further comments, uh, we'll now take a vote, all in favor? It's unanimous, the motion passes, welcome, thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, um. Oh, uh, so we'll move on to number eight, I forgot, that was what I forgot to mention before in my, um, my discussion on the committees. So at our net, when is our next meeting, is what, February?
Fourteenth.
Oh.
Somebody had to move on.
I thought it was the twenty-first. Third, it's the third Wednesday of the month, but.
If that's a challenge for all the, uh, lovers out there, I'm happy to have a discussion about, um, timing for that meeting. But we can have a, we can have an agenda discussion offline about that. Um, okay, so tha- that was the point, so at our next meeting, um, I'd like to at least have an update from the committees on where you're at in your, um, absorption of the budget, uh, at that point. I just want to make, you know, I I want to have some benchmark, so we can, you know, where is everybody at? So by February fourteenth, that should be, we all should have been, you know, tuning in to Board of, uh, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance. I'd like, you know, each committee to say, this is what we've been up to, and there are questions that have been posed, I I want to put some meat to the bones on that, it has to be some accountability, so we're out in the public. And they know that we're actually doing the job of the committees at that particular point. So with that said, um, committee reports, agenda, uh, item number eight. Um, I believe that some of the committees do have some updates, and I think some others, there isn't anything, so we'll just go down the list. Uh, bylaws and ordinances, uh, Tom and Hillary, do you have any up to?
I'll just say that we just talked about a, um, the meeting on January twenty-fourth, that's when we had scheduled the bylaws and ordinances committee meeting. However, it's negotiable, if depend, if it turns out to be a short agenda, we could do it at six thirty or something. Um, the two items that we're playing with, one is, um, Chris Shipper's request, the Conservation Committee's request for new funding source for open space. Uh, to be taken out of the conveyance tax, and then the other item that, um, there are some developments on is gas-powered leaf blowers. Just haven't sorted out exactly how to structure a meeting around that, but, um, stay tuned.
Very good. Okay, education, Maria and Rita, anything?
Just having, um, well, one, the budget, the Board of Ed budget is on the Board of Education website, if anyone wants to work at it.
Okay, yes.
Not approved yet, it's just there, and it's a PDF, so you can down, you can search on it, which is helpful. And the other thing is that the Board of Ed is having their workshop meeting tomorrow, I think, six thirty.
In the wagon room. In the wagon room, yeah.
And that's just, uh, it's not televised, so it's just a discussion with the board members and questions, and so, you know, one of us will try to go there and just stay on top of it.
Yeah, and I, and, uh, if you are interested in attending, which it's open to the public.
It's open to the public.
You can go, I would just, as a courtesy, you just might want to let folks know that you'll be coming, just in case there's a crowd, I don't know, they they wanted to know. Just in case, there's a lot of bodies out there.
Six o'clock, it's six o'clock.
Um, so if you do plan on attending, you just may want to give them a hint.
Okay, uh, finance and government, um, we have anything, Eric, or we'll just?
We have nothing.
All right, all right.
I'm, I'm waiting to get these budgets and and do a whole lot of deep dive, uh, no, sorry, just get in and learn what is involved, what they look like, how how they're framed.
Yeah.
Um, I I I'm being brand-new to all this, um, I'm gonna lean on Hillary for the process. And we'll work together and certainly have something, uh, more substantive in the way of a report before the fourteenth.
That's why I said, you know, last year's, uh, presentations by the various department has a great place to start, their decks are very easy to follow. And but again, the Board of Ed already has their, um, you know, obviously unapproved budget up. Health and Human Services, anything?
Yeah, I have an update, um, so the Health and Human Services raised the budget to two hundred and ninety-nine thousand this year. And they met with for selectmen, and, um, they were asked to cut the budget by fifty thousand. So they're grappling with, um, how they're gonna do that, they have a couple of different ideas, they do pay for the teen talk counselor right now, which is ninety-six thousand for the high school and thirty-six thousand for half of the Saks teen talk counselor. Uh, they also pay for the urgent assessment program of fifty thousand, which was added to their budget. Um, so they're grappling with how they're gonna cut that fifty thousand, their usage is up overall at the food pantry, and there's other needs that they feel like are growing. So that's something that's a work in progress right now that I'll keep you all updated on.
Great, thank you, uh, Infrastructure and Utilities.
Uh, we had a meeting scheduled with the Department of Public Works, but Tiger took ill, and the ma- the meeting has to be rescheduled, so we're waiting on that.
Land use wrecking conservation, Penny and Jennifer?
Um, I previewed the Park and Lake, um, meeting, they're, we're going through their budget. I thought it was kind of interesting that, um, their request for paddle, an additional paddle court is going to be put on hold for a while, because paddle use is down as pickleball is up.
The difference.
They said there were three hundred less paddle applications and three hundred more pickle, like it was.
That's right, so people are exercising, but they're just doing it a different way, that's, so that's interesting, and, um, everything else during their meeting really was, uh, uh, budget-centric. Um, on conservation, um, despite a very healthy agenda, uh, there was no discussion about anything on the agenda, because the, they were just talking about a couple requests that they were gonna have for budget, as to whether or not it was gonna fly, and how they make it fly, and that sort of thing. I will ask, is there any way to make the board re- meeting transmission audible?
That's what we're doing, that whole room is being, that's why this is this.
Well, I didn't know that.
Oh, I thought I announced it at the last meeting, so these are all new monitors, these are all gonna be new microphones, got that new thing over there, which is gonna be very cool to show documents, as well as the boardroom. Right now, we've just cobbled together the resources to make those rooms work, uh, Police Commission was in there tonight, but yes.
That'd be great, because a lot of us do attend those meetings, you know, remotely.
That room is really difficult to get.
Yeah, and everybody sits and, you know, away from the mic, and so it's a little, little tough.
That was excellent, we got a purgram, um, as well as some artifacts.
Perfect, perfect.
We're finished, this room is done, um, the problem that we're having right now is the work is done, but they need to come in and do body control, and they need four days of these rooms. And I'm having a really difficult time scheduling it, I literally suggested to them today that they may have to come in on the weekends and do it, because I just don't have four days.
Right.
To give them, and then we have a whole day of training, so I'm I'm telling them they want to work eleven to seven, eleven PM to seven AM, they can have it, or on the weekends, but right now, I mean, we're in budgets, we just don't, we can't give up these rules. So that's the special I'm having right now.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, um, Public Safety, Mike, do you have any? Okay.
We're just in the budget, we will fund the dog.
Yeah, you know, we find out what happened there, and which is in Apollo, that's.
He died. No, I don't think so. No, no, that was another.
Okay, I think that's a wrap, everybody, can we get a motion to adjourn?
No, don't move.
Second.
Okay.
All right.
Full second.
Full second. I did.
Thank you, everybody.
I think it's unanimous.
I'm just trying to follow.
Yeah.